We're going to go ahead and call our council meeting to order. If everybody will please stand, we'll have Mr. Perry lead us in prayer and then we will do the pleasure of allegiance. Mr. Perry?
All right, let us pray. Eternal God, our Father, first of all, we just want to thank you for this opportunity for everyone to come together to conduct business, to think of ways and ideas and means to just make our city a better place to live. Father, we are thankful and grateful for everything that you do for our city that we know of and everything that you do for our city that we don't know of. Father, I pray protection for our citizens, protection for our buildings, and protection for everything connected to this great city of Alma, Arkansas, that we love so much. As always, Father, I pray that this meeting will be conducted decently and in order. In Jesus' name, I pray, and amen.
Amen. We face the flag and hand salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. May we see them. Roll call, please.
Roll call, Sandra Philpatrick. Larry Blasingame?
Here.
James McGee?
Here.
Eddie Wakefield?
Here.
Evan Thacker?
Here.
Gary Perry?
Here.
All right. We need the approval of the minutes. Everybody should have a written copy of the minutes in front of them, a note. It's kind of a short notice on those. Give you a minute to look through there if you need to. And then at some point in time, we'll ask for a waving of the reading and accepting that the minutes as written.
I'm looking for your statements.
As written, good. We have a motion from Mr. McGee. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second from Mr. Wakefield.
I'd like to make a comment here to see if maybe, maybe next time that we can get the minutes out a little bit earlier. I'm a slow reader, and so it even took me a while to notice that Chris, he had the same paper, he had some minutes on the back here, so I'm reading.
Chris has been a little busy this week.
Okay.
So he's, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. But we'll get him next time. So all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And with the minutes, the minutes for the special meeting, we will address those in our next city council meeting. Chris wasn't able to get to those completely yet. I think you have halfway through one.
Yes. So we have a new transcription service that we use, but y'all say aye, so just step aye.
They had, you know, they had some other things on the plate here the last couple of weeks, so they were, it was just running beyond.
Understood.
Public forum, there's none. New business. You should have in front of you Resolution 2022-20. We need a motion, bring this to the table if you would.
So move.
Second.
Have a motion from Mr. Perry and a second from Mr. Thacker. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? This is Resolution Number 2022-20. This is a resolution declaring certain buildings, housing, and other structures located at 320 Maple Shade in Alma, Arkansas, to constitute a public nuisance, to be in continuing violation of the city ordinance in condemning said structure. Again, this is something that Mr. Brister has put together for us so that we can continue trying to get that piece of property cleared up. Cody, this is something we've actually been working on for two years now, correct?
Yeah, it's been a while, I guess ever since the gentleman passed away, and they tried to be in contact with his family.
Yeah.
They live, they live out of state as well.
And we have, no, no.
We've had it in court for cleanup orders, and it's just with family out of state, they sort of abandoned it, and this is the procedure that moved forward.
And we, due diligence was made here to work with the family to, you know, give them a chance to get the property cleaned up.
Yeah, she actually did come to town and worked on it a while, and she kind of, kind of gave up.
So they have all that and law, you know, cover.
Okay. And this property is now, it's dangerous, it's a public nuisance, it needs to, we need, we need to be able to move forward with this. So it's probably going to be the city's responsibility to clean it up.
Yeah, so the way that works, I don't know if y'all have done these before, I'm sure you're city attorneys, so the state statute that lets you tear them down, you can, you get a lien on the property, you're capped, and I believe the legislature may have changed the amount this last session, but it's about $7,500, and typically my cities that have torn stuff down, it's about what it's costing. So you, so usually you're offset, if the value of the lot is at least that much, you'll, you'll get your money back. You're not going to, you're not make money, of course, but, but you should break.
It should be cheaper than the church.
Actually, it would be that much cheaper to pay it because you won't have to look at that when I go back.
Yes. Motion to adopt Red Lake, number 2022-20.
Second.
We have a motion from Mr. Wakefield and a second from Mr. Thacker. With this one, I am going to go ahead and ask for a roll call, if you would.
Roll call, Sandra Philpatrick.
Yes.
Larry Blasingame?
Yes.
James McGee?
Yes.
Eddie Wakefield?
Yes.
Evan Thacker?
Yes.
Gary Perry?
Yes.
That motion carries. Next on the agenda is Resolution 2022-21. Need a motion to bring this one to the table.
So move.
Motion from Mr. Perry?
Second.
Second.
We have a second from Mr. Thacker. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed?
Mr. Blasingame?
Second.
Oh, I didn't hear that. Yeah, sorry. This one, Mr. Thacker. All right, there was no objections. Resolution 2022-21, it's the, the same type of resolution as the previous one. This one's concerning the, concerning the property of 433 Mulberry Street. Again, building that we, we have given due diligence. Cody, how long have we been working on this one? Year and a half, two years?
Yeah, it's about the same, it's been a while.
Same or a bit.
I'm not as intimately as familiar with this one, just because I talked to the family on the other one a lot, so I defer to Cody on exactly.
I would defer it to Pee Wee, since he's been dealing with it actually longer than I have.
We, we, yes, numerous times cleanup orders posted, Pee Wee has worked on them a lot.
Citations, gone to court, yeah, the whole, whole thing. It's, it's documented.
Absolutely. He's, he's got a quarter inch stack of papers on each one of these, at least, and the other one I have dealt with a lot, so I even have.
Basically, when I first started, that was one of the first house issues, and it was in another condition, it was back.
A year and a half.
Yeah.
And it's abandoned as well. Yes, that one is abandoned.
Yeah. Yeah, so I'd say that we adopt Resolution Number 2022-21.
Second. We have a motion from Mr. Blasingame and a second from Mr. Perry. Again, I'd like a roll call on this, if you would.
Roll call, Sandra Philpatrick?
Yes.
Larry Blasingame?
Yes.
James McGee?
Yeah.
Eddie Wakefield?
Yes.
Evan Thacker?
Yes.
Gary Perry?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next on the agenda is the discussion of the financial audit. I don't have it sitting in front of me, but I can, everybody, all the council members have a copy of the audit sent to them. The hearing was on the second. It went through as we expected. The only finding that we had on there was on our assets list. And again, this is, this is an issue that stems all the way back to several years ago. It has been, I think Shawna worked on it, started trying to get it cleaned up, and now it's going to be Chris's responsibility from here on out to get it cleaned up. It was in such bad shape, we're just having a difficult time getting it where it needs to be. But I think, I don't think we have a plan to work on it and a way to attack it as they move it forward. So we'll, we'll get it, we're going to, you know, that audit was for 2020, and so 2021's audit is going to be coming in. They should start that, we expect them in August. We haven't had anybody call and say otherwise, but we also haven't had anybody call and say, we're going to be here next month or in August either. So maybe towards the end of the year before they get in to do 2021. So it's important to note in there, and hopefully everybody read that, that the, the checks and balances, the systems that we have in place were, actually Ross was, was really, really impressed with those, he liked what we had done. Any of the issues that we had from the previous audit was taken care of, as we knew they would be. We had already started implementing the, the new processes. We had one, they didn't show up in that report, I'll just tell you, that we had one incident of a, of a receipt where somebody had went and picked up dinner for Thanksgiving, I think it was, and, and they took a check and they gave them the check and they came back with the receipt, but it wasn't, it wasn't turned in. And, and everybody looked and looked and looked and looked and looked, couldn't find that receipt. That employee is no longer employed with the Seaters, so we couldn't find it. However, again, we have, we have a system in place now that, you know, first of all, we don't pay anything if we don't have a receipt to begin with, and everything is scanned. We have everything being scanned now through laser fish. So we have copies of checks, we have copies of receipts, we have copies of invoices, we have copies of POs, if there's a PO, I mean, everything goes through laser fish. So we, we, we don't suspect that we'll have another issue with it yet. So. And if anybody has a question for Chris, you know, now's the time to ask. Or any other comment, anything to do with the audit.
No, I think Shawna and Kim did a fantastic job of navigating that with everyone else in the city answering all the questions during the time that Ross was here.
Yeah, we, you know, we, there's a couple of other things that we've kind of run into that we, we've looked at. And, and we, you know, we also need to, we talked with Sean about it, how to address some of these issues moving forward, and, because it's borderline stuff, and we just, again, we want to make sure that we're, I mean, we, we want to make sure that we're right with the audit, obviously, but we also want to make sure that what we're doing is good practice, you know, for the city. And, you know, it's, it's important that we pay attention to, you know, the availability for something to happen, but also the environment for something to happen. And that's one of the things we've talked about as department heads and as a city, want to make sure of. So one of the whole reasons why we started instituting our truck policy was so that we can be more aware of our environment also. So I think we, I think we've got good policies in place, and I think the audit shows it. And we suspect the next one will be, I suspect that we're going to get deemed again on the asset because we're, there's no way we're going to get the asset list done before they start the next audit. But I suspect that we'll be able to be working on it and be to a point where maybe they won't, maybe that'll give us a little bit of a break on it. We'll see.
How much, how much time do you think we'll need to get it?
Hours, hours, days, weeks, months. I can't, I, I, and, and again, my, my goal here is not to sit here and try to throw anybody under the bus, but I cannot paint a picture well enough to explain how bad a shape that is actually in, and it was for years. Listen, we, we were paying insurance on buildings that no longer existed. We were paying insurance on vehicles that didn't run, they were getting back in the yard back there. We had vehicles that we had sold or, you know, we had taken, you know, they weren't ours to begin with, and so they were given back, that there's no, there's no track of that record being taken place. And, and so, you know, I, I don't know, I don't know that we're going to be able to solve all of the issues, to be honest with you. I think that it's going to get to a point where what we're going to have to do is say, okay, this is where we are, this is what we have, here we've been keeping track of it, from this date on, we've been keeping track of it, and, and then take our, our lashings for this, you know, for that other period. I don't know that we're going to be able to solve it all. I, I just, I just don't. You know, and at some point in there, we've got to, you know, you've got to make that determination, are we wasting a bunch of resources now and time on something that, you know, we need to be focused moving forward now.
There's even land that's not been, that we've no longer owned, that we're still being assessed for, you know, by the county, that we're responsible for, pay them, so submit the forms for that to be transferred or relinquished.
So, yeah, we'll, we'll get there, but here is, anybody else have any questions on the audit? Hopefully everybody looked through it, because it was, it was important. Now to get us moving forward then on our department head reports, and we'll start with Chief Wakefield in the fire department.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Month of May was not a zero call month, like the previous month, it was a low call month. We responded to calls for a couple of smoke alarms at residential houses, a couple, two calls of power lines down and one vehicle fire. All of our calls, just want to make everybody aware that we're still running our smoke alarm program. I've got a few left, so you can know or hear if anybody that needs their residential smoke alarms replaced, just let us know or have them contact us. Other than that, I'll have you ready.
Somebody have anything for chief? All right. Thank you, we'll move on, Chief Porter.
First is exciting news. Some of you all asked me about the units out here, so we picked up two of our new patrol units today. Their equipment's in on the radio, we've got them scheduled to get strapped next week, so those will be on the road pretty quick.
And, and they will not let me do the sirens or the lights or drive it either, so I...
We did offer to give them a ride, but it was a bad scene.
We'll save five.
Just, some of you might have seen on Facebook, we had two officers attend the School of Law Enforcement Supervision, which is a four-week program that they go through and go through pretty extensive training during those four weeks, and they graduated that program as Captain Hartley and Sergeant Ryan, and so we're proud of them. Couple things that we did, we put on a staff training for the Boys and Girls Club staff. Our officers spent some time down there and have a, a training for their staff, what to do if this happens or this happens, and so the Boys and Girls Club was appreciative of that. We also did, went back to the Boys and Girls Club and spent some time with their teams and their summer program and did a program at their crime scene demonstration. Honestly, we, it was a good turnout for the family fun day. If you missed that, then you should have came because it was a great event. We also participated in the United Way Touch a Truck this weekend event here, and that was a great turnout for that. Coming up on July the 26th is the Alma Boots and Bags Blood Drive, which will be held at the community building that day. So we should see all of you all there giving blood for the police department. Other than that, I don't have any questions.
Either chief?
Yes, sir. How close are we to getting attendance for the, for the office?
We can't even apply for it until July the 1st, because that's been the law. So July the 1st, there's some paperwork that we have to submit to the state, they have to verify it, and then from there, I don't know how long it will take.
Somebody else? Thank you, chief. Mr. Schindler?
Me and Mark are cracking up because he's not even on there. That was on purpose. We asked to have their release. We thought we needed to go home and watch a ballgame. Either said it could be a little opinion, and I figured, you know, because he has the ability to make sure. So planning department, we've issued 15 permits during the month of May, total revenue of $14,0575. We had three new commercial and remodel permits, two of them were for the school, if you've been by the school and seen some of their construction work. One of them has also been a city-sized library, the library's been a little bit of a remodel of the face, on the basis, that's good. So almost $6 million worth of construction issued just for month of May, so we're doing great, we've already, I don't have the, my stats in front of me, but I think we almost doubled our amount of construction permits, so it's great. Crafton Toll, so I actually met with them Tuesday when I was up in Orange, Arkansas for stormwater, so talking with Robin, she has pretty much the map and some of other stuff done, and she just needs to get all her notes from that one meeting all down, basically put into a readable foredeck, so it just notes. So once she gets that to me, I can send it all out to all of the planning commission, you guys review, and then we also send it to the public and get their review, go from there basically. So we're on the right track, we're just kind of behind, Robin's also had COVID recently, so she's been kind of a high, a lag trying to catch up, so it is what it is, so. Tapping RTP applications, those were included and set off, I believe we'll hear back sometime late fall, so hopefully we'll get up with those. We have one with RTP and one with a tapping course, so. Amazon is also partnering with local businesses in the area for local delivery, I believe they're trying to get four local businesses, I know for sure there was one that was interested during that meeting. I'm sure on the other three, if they found those partners yet, but they'll be doing that in the, in the middle of the late August. That's seven days a week, up to 50 packages that they're delivering, and I think they're making $2.50 off each package. So you can make some money if you know your routes and I guess kind of maneuver it how, you know, you can spend less gas, especially with the gas prices, so. The two properties located near Red Hill Road that we put on the Arkansas Economic Development Commission website, I talked with one of the AEDC people last week, or the week before, and they actually said there was actually been some interest in those sites already, so we'll see what happens. We also still need to get that annexed in, so that's also on the T G list. I did win the 2022 CDI scholarship, so that helps us save $550, so always great to save money, especially when, when we were looking at, you know, downturn of revenue in the economy and everything like that. Planning Commission, and that didn't meet with any items on the agenda, and then also we had that vision plan meeting, and then in June, we didn't meet, of course, we didn't have any agenda items as well, but we're also still looking for that one opening, so if you guys know anybody who's ever been there. On the rest of the goals that I didn't touch on, on the TV's old truck, I know we've talked with Mark, Jeff, and the mayor on potential options on what to do as a city, but then we're kind of backtracking, and so trying to find some other options on what to do on some of these older vehicles, so we'll see what happens, but trying to get our ducks in the road first. And then the other trainings I attended, Pee Wee, actually Pee Wee attended that coefficient training, so. And that's about it. The planning department, do they have any questions? Any updates on the RV park? I haven't heard from them. Last time I checked, they're still doing their work. Other than that, I did get a call from one of, someone asking what it was selling, hoping we have some information too. I was like, oh, you're talking about the RV park, really, sure. I was like, okay, well, it's gonna be, so.
Anybody else have any questions? Thank you, Cody. Just to add a little bit what he said about the property that we listed with the AEDC, we had to jump through a few hoops to do this, even though it's not in city limits, it's adjacent to our city limits, both pieces of property are, and, but still, because of the way that it was set up, the county should have entered it, but we, we had those discussions with the county, we got everything taken care of. And there, there is one party now that is of great interest, and we, we are expecting to have some meetings probably set with the AEDC and the city and parties within the next month, I would say. I'll keep you up to date as much as I can. Again, there's non-disclosure stuff here, but we, we're pretty excited about it. And I think Emily actually sought you out, didn't she?
Yes.
Yeah, so, I mean, if that tells you anything, I mean, at, at the municipal meetings, Emily sought Cody out and said, hey, so it's, it's going well, is what I want to say, so. Mark, Public Works, nice try.
Josh, is the man the agenda?
I don't know how much money you gave Chris, but it wasn't enough.
All right, just, if you got your reports, you can see that we finished the flow testing on the sanitary sewer system, and, and it certainly identified some issues, and we were, we were keen to where that was going to happen, so our, our next step is to do some smoke testing in the highest inflow infiltration areas, and, and to do that, it's going to be about $65,000, and I may talk to you all about doing something with that the end of this year, but I may end up bringing that to you as part of a budget item for next year, so. We do have some funds that we could use unappropriated funds for this, but I'm not certain we want to do that just yet, but, so next steps are going to be to, to do that, that smoke testing. And what we're looking for, just so you'll know what this is all about, we're trying to figure out where this water is getting into this, into the sanitary sewer, drainage water is getting in, and it could be coming from people who have, have plumbed their gutters into the sanitary sewer, happens all the time. One of the greatest areas of inflow is from Eagle Crest, and, and, you know, it's all fairly new sewer system up there, you know, you wouldn't think that you would see a lot of inflow infiltration, but it was... But it was incredibly high. The velocity change in that sewer system from a dirt rain event was incredible. And so we're gonna have to investigate to figure out. So what you basically do is go to a manhole, you plug one end of it, and then you put a, it's just a fan, for lack of a better term. And you create smoke and that smoke travels down that sewer main. And it'll come up wherever that, whatever's connected to it's gonna be, gonna be known. And so if there's gutters, you'll start seeing smoke coming down the top of people's houses. You'll say, oh, here's one connected to it. It's shit. So what will ultimately happen from that is there will be, there will be some things exposed. We're gonna have to tell people, you're gonna have to undo this, whatever you've done and fix it. And so that's something that we'll look at either later this year or put it in the budget for next year to do the smoke testing. But the other thing is during the budget talk, we talked about Cultivar. It's a, it's a street out at Pin Oak Subdivision. And it runs between Red Oak and Laurel Way, if you know where those streets are. It's just a short L-shaped street, but there's about a thousand-foot of water line on that street that's defective. And we've already had four mainline ruptures on that line. And so I talked to y'all about replacing that line. I only asked for a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in the budget to do that. But I've got the engineer's estimate on it now and it's two hundred and thirty thousand dollars. So and I know things have changed. It's changed since we, even since we put the budget together, things have changed dramatically. But so now we're looking at a cost of about two hundred and thirty thousand dollars. And the funds for this, even a hundred and fifty, were gonna be ARPA funds. So I'm not, I'm not sure about even where we stand on the ARPA, where some companies are still available. But I can't move forward with that until we know for sure the funding's there. And I need basically for y'all to agree that we're gonna spend more on that than we did originally mentioned.
There's plenty of money in the ARPA.
If we need to share those funds between ARPA and maybe emergency funds in the water department, we could do that. But we need to, we need to look at that project. And I don't want to wait until the end of the year to start trying to work on that. I need to really, I need some direction from you all now. Do we want to go ahead and start working on that, trying to do bidding and get a price from a legitimate contractor?
If there's money in ARPA, my opinion is go ahead and start looking at it.
Yeah, you should work over there. I know exactly.
And it's worst-case scenario, right? I mean, the worst case is we have to use, you know, take it all out of ARPA. There might be some other things that we can do in there, as Mark was mentioning. But if we, if it all has to come out of ARPA, then it all comes out of ARPA. I mean, that's what we need to use that money for, is that kind of stuff anyways.
And I wouldn't be coming to talk to you about this, except that it's way more than I budgeted. So I need approval to look forward. You know, obviously, we can still knock a word contract later. This doesn't commit us to anything other than going through bidding lawsuits.
I would suggest that we move forward. We need a motion from somebody on the council.
I'll make a motion.
That we have a, we have a motion from Mr. Glassingame and a second from Mr. Thacker. All in favor of Mark moving forward with this project, please say aye. Any opposed?
All right. Thank you for that direction. I appreciate it. Along those lines, but not exactly, we wanted to, for years, wanted to put together an emergency contract. And what that amounts to is we, we get, for one-year period, we get bid pricing on different things, like a six-inch line replacement or a manhole repair replacement. You know, it's things that our crew are not prepared to do. We don't have the equipment to do that. But there's contractors out there who are able to do that. So basically, it's just all the things that could happen out in our system. So what happens now is it becomes an emergency repair. You know, I have to just go ahead and do it and come back later to y'all and ask for, you know, a resolution or whatever to waive competitive bidding, which is not really, we're kind of going about this backwards the way we do it now. So I've been talking with Neil Morrison about putting together an emergency contract. He's got that all put together now. And I need permission to move forward with bidding on that emergency contract. It's not to do anything unless it's necessary. We don't pay anything for this unless we need it. But the good thing is, is we have bid pricing on those things. And it meets the, so if we go over that fifty thousand dollar limit on this repairs, I don't have to come to y'all for a, to waive competitive bidding. So we'll basically do competitive bidding upfront for a one-year period for any kind of repairs on the water system that we're not capable of doing. So for y'all.
For some of my other cities, it works really well.
Okay.
Get some backup compliance with the law because technically, because pricing is such, you really should be bidding those projects. But if your water and sewer is not working, there's no time for that.
It's an emergency then.
So it's worked really well. And Ben Yerren is the attorney where I've done one.
And the only time that it is used is in an emergency.
And ours is, ours will be patterned right after the one that Ben Yerren uses. And they've been, they've been happy with theirs. And there were lots of discussions. There've been a lot of discussion about this, about things to include, to exclude. Anyway, we boiled it all down to what we think is a legitimate contract. And I just need permission to move forward with going out for bids on that.
Yeah, I'll make the motion.
I have a second. Okay. We have a motion from Mr. Glassingame and a second from Mr. Perry. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Any other questions, comments?
And when, when those bids come through, I will come back to you for permission to approve that. But I need permission to move forward with that. The other thing was, Mr. Wakefield asked about it, are we gonna mow the dam this year? Yes, they're doing it Monday. And so, and it could be that they're gonna have to do a controlled burn of that afterwards because the grass is pretty high. It's just gonna be laying there, so fireworks are gonna wanna ignite it. So they may have to do a controlled burn in preparation for fireworks. But so they'll be mowing the dam on Monday. And the only other thing I was gonna share with you was that, as you know, we have four new staff members and that are operators, water operators, that they're having to be trained. They have to get their licensing through the state. And so that process is ongoing. Like this week, we have two guys in our land management department that are out. And then the Jacob, who's my right hand right now, he's out on vacation. So I've actually had to sweat this week. I had to go out and do cutoffs today. So if you see me out and about, I'm not usually doing that. But it's refreshing to do that and it's good for me to get out there and experience that from time to time. So if you see me out there working and sweating on the side of the road, just thank God for it. And that's all I have to wish y'all had. Any questions?
Any other questions for Mr. Yarwood?
Mark, did you send your report out? You mentioned your report. Did you send that out to us or was that supposed to be in the council packet?
It went in the council packet. I'm sorry.
Okay.
Yes.
You should have that. I'll send it to you.
Okay. Well, I would just ask, Kenny, you mentioned it. I didn't see it. I didn't know.
Well, I used to send it directly. But then I just started sending it to the clerk for them to put it in.
And that's why I asked. I wouldn't.
Would y'all prefer to just get that independently, early, maybe, if you want it?
I don't really have a preference. I just had to send it somewhere.
You had to try to, okay. You may reference. We haven't seen it.
Okay, okay.
Yeah. And Chris will make sure to get that to everybody too. All right. Very good. Finance, Chris Miller, you're up.
So I'll be honest, I don't have any reports for you guys directly. I can tell you that when I'm trying to settle in, we're gonna be paying the bills, keeping the lights on, getting payroll taken care of. Past couple days, I've been really showing Rhonda how to, how to do my old job, if you will, of the council table. And so we've been doing batches, things like that. With this being a short week, it's just been one of those situations where we were doing payroll for the pool on Tuesday, sorry. And so it usually takes two days to do payroll for the pool, just because there's seventy-eight employees and we have to input and then print off the checks. And anyway, it's a long process. So as far as like actual reports, I don't have those. I do have, I did find the format for those, so I can get you those coming up. As far as balances and things like that, that shows like account balances and where everyone's at and things like that. There's been some corrections. I've been making some corrections. And there's not been a whole lot of information that was left for me for certain things like retirement and APers, LOF fee. That's another wonderful thing that I kind of have to learn on my own. And I made, probably made a few mistakes in there and go back and fix those. But it's been an interesting time. And I know it's kind of one of those things, like not to make excuses, but it's just, it's been. So this packet kind of reflects my, I would say, inability to get everything together all at once in this week, so.
Next month will be better.
Next month will be better, absolutely, hundred percent. I'm just fighting for tomorrow, okay?
But the first of next week, can you have, you know, the report that's generated, you know, the expense of revenue report that's generated off, you know, N code? You can have that to everybody around first of next week. Can't do it tomorrow, Monday, maybe?
Yes.
Okay. And so we'll make sure we get that out. I think that's the most important thing. And then the rest of the spreadsheets and stuff will come together.
Do you have the templates for all those?
Yes. Yes. I had to remake a template for a couple of them, so that takes a little bit of time. And then I did send out all the reports to the departments. And no one had anything that was outstanding or anything like that as it relates to how everything's billed out or expenditures that are in the wrong place type situation.
Hey, you mentioned, and I should have asked you this earlier this week, but now that you're here, it's all a month. You mentioned payroll and stuff at the pool. Someone asked me, and it was in passing, so I don't have any information. But someone asked me about the pay of some of the people working out there and mentioned it was below minimum wage. Is there a reason for that?
The technically, minimum wage, there's no one that's making below minimum wage on a state level, except for the minors, which are people that are under the age of sixteen.
Okay.
So according to Arkansas labor laws. And there's actually only two people, one person that was incorrectly. And I had to fix that and reissue a new check and do a back pay.
So what do we pay the minors?
Well, I'm sorry.
What do we pay the minors that's below the minimum wage?
It's nine dollars an hour.
Nine dollars an hour. Everybody else is making minimum wage or above.
Or most, almost everyone. Eleven, yes.
I was, I was asked, I was in a hurry. It was like, I have no idea, but I'll ask and I'll have to ask until you just mentioned it a year and a month, so.
There's been several smaller things like that that we've been fixing as they come up and you don't see them. And there's no way to, you know, glass fall type situation, you know, you can't see them coming. And then they happen and you're like, oh, okay, yeah, no problem. Let's fix that and move on. Luckily, the pool people, the aquatic park employees have been pretty forgiving, I guess is the word.
Right.
I guess my question is, Chris, what can we do to help you, you know, kind of get your head above water things along those lines?
I, next month will be a completely different thing. Like I was really just stressing out over, over this, putting this all together. Like I said, I've been transcribing, finally found a little bit of time to transcribe. And my desk is finally getting piled from all the stuff that's like, and so it's been, it's been one of those things in which Rhonda is finally, we're able to finally move her into some of the things that she's able to help me with. So I'm not doing both, because basically since physician is vacated, I've been doing both jobs. And it's been, well, technically three jobs, because if you count the council clerk. So it's just been a little, little difficult. I'm not gonna lie. I'd be lying. I felt like I was drowning a couple times, like, but it's, it will slowly come out of that.
You'll get your name for me.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. But just let us know, you know, if there's something, you know, that pops up or you find, you find a different way on how to do something or, you know, just those different things. Just let us know where we can help out.
There's an example of that, as I've had to reach out to Chief Wakefield. He's been really helpful with things as it relates to like LOF fee. And then there's the fireman's pension. So we had some questions whether or not we were in compliance with LOF fee. And it's been kind of going back and forth with representatives from the state because they're like, well, you gotta do it this way and the mayor has to be there. And so we're learning as we go because there were some things that weren't being, we weren't necessarily in compliance with.
Prior.
Prior, prior to me, prior to the current administration, prior to some of you guys being on the council. I mean, we're talking like all the way back to Mayor John Robert Valentine, sorry. So there's things that go all the way back to him that we didn't necessarily know. Or legislature has changed those things that we're slowly saying, okay, well, we'll get this taken care of. I mean, we're doing it. We're just doing it. There's no excuse. We just do it and move on, so.
Anybody else? Thank you, Mr. Miller. And we'll talk parks. Waterpark, again, going strong. We, I know that I sent an email out to everybody at Davie's after the social media posts went out. We never closed the park. We had no indication of any reason to close the park. Health department came out, and I can't stress this enough. The only reason the health department came out was because I begged them to come out. Because there was, as they kept telling me, there was no reason for them to come out because of the processes that are in place, right? So if something was to ever happen and medical personnel decided that they found, looked for something and if there's something there, they immediately called the health department in Little Rock. And then they immediately get ahold of whoever, in this case, it would have been Crafton County. And then they would have immediately closed us until we had figured out what the problem was. None of that had happened. So because of that, he really didn't want to come. But I made it clear that, you know, look, this could have been a real bad PR on them also if there really had been something. And they didn't come, then you know what that would look like. And so he came and did his job thoroughly. We checked out, just like I knew we would. We'd been operating within all the health department requirements, guidelines. All of our filtration was acting and working exactly as it should. And so there was, there's nothing there.
Did we ever have a direct complaint from someone?
No, it was a social media post. Now, they, they called after they'd set up a GoFundMe account. And they called and they talked to Kenra. And then I spoke with the father and the grandmother. They had mentioned of others being involved, but never gave any names. And I never saw any names given, other than the one. So, and again, I think we have a game plan moving forward on dealing with that also. I've talked to Mr. Brewster about, so we, but as far as our water park is concerned, it's just exactly what we knew it was. It's a great place to go. So attendance has been good. We finally, finally had the red and blue slide working together. You know, we had the, we had the red slide going and then it wasn't and it was a blue slide. We had to change the foot valve. We shut the blue slide down to change the foot valve on the red slide. Red slide worked, blue slide wouldn't work. So we had to do some stuff to the blue slide. We finally got the foot valve on that one changed and a couple of other things. And we had them both running for about twenty-eight hours, thirty-two hours, I guess it was. And the red shut down on us again. And, and so we, we believed, we're still trying to do some troubleshooting with it with the electricians, but we believe we found the problem. But one of the issues is, is that our panels that we have in our slides are twenty, well, I think that particular one's probably about twelve, fifteen years old. And they've discontinued those. So trying to find parts right now. It's bad enough if a part's not discontinued, but when a part's discontinued, it makes it even harder. And so anyway, we've got the part coming. We've got the slide working. And it's, you know, again, it's, we've got the red and blue working well. And so we'll see what we have moving forward with that. We may end up having to just look at changing panels. Sometimes, you know, it's just better to get out of the leaky boat and get into a new vessel. Maybe that's what the new, we'll see. We'll see. So but water park's going going great. Everything, all the slides are working as they should. Attendance has been good. They're doing their first after-hour swim tonight with, what was the DJ's name? Oh, I forgot his name now, but anyway. They'll be out until ten o'clock. We're planning on having a special swim again on the second, which is our Liberty Festival. And we're gonna do the same thing we did last year. We're gonna have the park open, and we'll stop everybody, get everybody off the slides, turn the lights out, let everybody enjoy the fireworks from the pool. And then once fireworks are over, we'll turn the lights back on, we'll let them swim a little bit longer before running out of slides. We expect to have a bigger crowd this year than we did last year. That's what it's looking looking like it's gonna be doing. Snack Shack's doing great. The amount of pizzas that we are cooking and selling, we you'd think that we were a pizza restaurant. They are selling a bunch. They've started having to deliver pie crust now like three times a week, because we don't have a refrigerator big enough to keep enough pie crust over there. So all that's working really, really well. It's coming together nice. Pretty happy, you know? If we can just get the floors done over there, then it'll be a good year. All the employees are doing a great job at the water park. Rest of the parks, we got some more crusher dust. We had had our Memorial walking trails in really good shape. And and then, you know, the rain came and washed a bunch of stuff out, so we got out there, worked on the trails again, had them in really good shape. And then here came the rains again. And now they're back up in good shape. There was a board that was broke over on just the end of the board on one of on the far west side of the trails on that bridge, and the end of it had rotted out and had come down through there. And so that's fixed. We've got a metal plate over it right now, but again, it's hard to get lumber at any kind of a decent price. But we're we're looking. We'll go in and replace all the boards on the bridge when we when we get a chance, and we can do it affordably. But other than that, the Memorial walking trails are in really good shape. We we are talking with the same people that are working on the bike trails. They went down there and they looked at it, and we've got a couple of ideas. We might do some changes on that trail. We're gonna meet with one of the state folks over by the dam, because in areas where we're having problems with that trail getting washed out every time we get a heavy rain, maybe there's some things that we can do to help that, so that we're not chasing our tails so much. So we'll see. As the bike trails are coming, we're about at, I talked to him yesterday, we're about a hundred and fifty feet from having all of the trail built. The only thing that we're working on right now is the bridge. They have some of the materials, some of the material in that they need to build the bridge, but they don't have it all. Still having a little bit of a problem getting some of it. But once they get everything for the bridge, then they're gonna get out, and that's gonna be the final thing that they'll do, build that bridge to connect the two trails. And and then we're we, again, Cody made mention of it, we submitted the application for phase two, so that as soon as we can get this done, hopefully, we can roll right into, you know, getting a grant to help us with the second phase of this project and get at least the intermediate. That's gonna be the, you know, the next part of this, be the intermediate, depending on how much money we get. Maybe we can go ahead and try to get some of the intermediate and some of the expert trails built. But what we have left will be intermediate, expert, downhill, and then some sort of a small pump track over there that's not really a pump track, it'll be what you would consider a a learning track as for skills. It's really kind of small, because the the big park needs to be put over at Cristella, is where that one needs to go. So the bike and skateboard park and all that kind of needs to be together at Cristella Park. We don't have the room out there for a big park anyway. So that's kind of where we are with 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 all that. We're getting ready for the Liberty Festival, which is coming up on the second. I'm gonna kind of move into the mayor's notes with this. It is bigger than it was last year. Last count, I'm trying to remember what they told me Tuesday, we're sixty-five, sixty-six vendors that we have already, not just applications, but money for. They are confirmed, and we still have people signing up to be part of the Liberty Festival. Water Department's gonna be out there, set up, doing a, I guess, B.E.'s actually built some some houses, so they're gonna let the kids, you know, put out some fires, I guess, and do some demonstrations, which would be pretty pretty good. We're gonna have laser tag going. There's gonna be some bounce arounds. It's it's gonna be, it's shaping up to be a real fun day. And then, of course, we'll do the fireworks, which, thanks to the A and P, they gave more money this year for the fireworks. So it is going to be a a bigger show than what we normally see. And so we're 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 excited about the second coming up and Liberty Festival. Library, working on the library. We have all the prep work. If you haven't been by, you can look. We have all the prep work for the EFS on. We're taking bids now on the on the EFS part of this. We'll have the same guy that did the water department is gonna meet with me Tuesday, and we're gonna go over and look, and then he'll give us a bid on there as well. We have one already, and I think we have a third one. We have two more still to come. And so, you know, the the library, it's gonna be nice once it comes together, which is kind of what the purpose is. And we've said it all along, as we continue to work on the downtown area, we've got to lead the way. And so we can't have property that the city owns, you know, lying behind, right? We gotta get it up. So so we're doing that. We're getting there. I can't think of anything else to think of. Actually, today, we'll have on Liberty Festival, we'll make sure to have electricity on this year, right? And water turned on, so we'll be good. Anybody have any questions on anything on parks? Anything? The mayor's notes. Do we want to schedule another public hearing for the fireworks display and stuff, or are we good?
I think we're good right now.
Okay. All right. Do we want to set something for firearms?
Probably not, not at the moment.
Okay. All right. Anybody else have anything?
Yeah, for adjourned. Just I need the councils to take connection on the audit, just so it's answered fully. We don't need an audit.
Oh, the audit? So on the discussion of the audit, I know everybody said that they didn't have any questions or anything, but we need to go ahead and we have a need a motion to accept the audit and accept what we've given you as what we're gonna do with it moving forward.
Someone?
All right. We have a motion from Mr. McGee, and we have a second.
Second.
We have a second from Mr. Thacker. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? All right. We're good there. All right. So if there are no other questions, any other comments or anything? Mr. McGee, do your job.
I moved that we're adjourned.
You the second?
Second.
You got both of those? All in favor, say aye. All right. We are adjourned.
I think I could do it. I think you could do it.
Hi, Lucas Manson, please. You, I mean, have you got, was that a lady, was that on it last year? What's her name?
Kenra Newton. Kenra Newton.